The Green River Trail with the Milwaukee Two Levy Project. Subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Now Terry is going to go on to his second topic. Agreement with Methune for Mill Creek Canyon Master Plan.
Yeah, thanks again. This is one we're really excited about. This has been a long time in the making.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to say welcome to Kent City Council Workshop. We have two items on our agenda today. Item number one will be hearing from the Sound Cities Association and then item number two will be Information Technology, Mike Carrington and team. We're going to kick it off with one of my favorite person, the executive director of Sound Cities Association that we all familiar with, Deanna. She does such a phenomenal job with Sound Cities and I'm so excited to have her here and share with us a little about what's going on with Sound Cities Association. So Deanna, it's all yours.
Well, thank you so much, Council President Voice and members of the council. It's great to see you all as well as the mayor. I wish I could be there with you in person tonight. It's really an honor to be here with all of you. I've got a few slides to show you from PowerPoint. Please feel free to stop me anywhere along the way and ask me any questions and I'm going to plan to leave plenty of time at the end for questions. So with that, let's go ahead and get started with the slideshow.
Okay.
I can't see the slideshow. Is it up now or?
Yes.
Just one second, yeah.
Okay. Great. So I think all of our Kent City Council members know that we are a nonprofit association, the Sound Cities Association. We represent 38 cities in King County. There are 39 total cities in King County. We represent all the cities under population of 250,000. So that's everybody but Seattle. So we have cities as large as Kent and Bellevue, cities as small as Sky Comish and Yarrow Point. So it's a pretty diverse group of cities that we represent from all across the county. And we do lots of different things with the cities. We do advocacy, education, leadership support, mutual support and networking. Next slide. And so this is just a little bit about our mission, our vision and our values. I'll talk a little bit more about some of these things in a little bit further in the presentation, but really we are geared up to be a group that does help all of you as elected officials do your job well so that we can make this whole region as good as it can be. Next slide. And so many of the things that we do are listed on this slide here. One of the most important things that we do is we appoint people to various regional committees and we provide them with staffing support. We help them so that cities that don't have a lot of staff, maybe don't have as many staff, some of the Seattle City Council members have a whole team of their own staff. And we know that people who are part-time council members and even full-time mayors in most cities don't have that kind of staff. And so we help support them so that when they go to the table, they can be as knowledgeable and informed as they can be. And we do policy research and analysis and advocacy on behalf of all of our 38 cities. We do training and education programs for our members to help them be as great as council members as they can be, just like all of you are. And we also provide networking opportunities so that our members can get to know each other and learn from each other. Next slide. So as I mentioned, we appoint people to regional boards and committees in the region. There are over 30 regional boards and committees that we have the appointing authority to at Sound Cities Association. And we provide staffing support to those committees. And we also have a committee that I'll talk about in a moment called the Public Issues Committee that gives policy direction to all of those committees. And every city in King County has a seat there, except for Seattle. Next slide. So we think that there's sort of a three-legged stool of regional governance in that King County and Seattle and SCA all have appointing authority to these regional boards and committees. And so when our members serve on these committees, they're not just there representing an individual city, but they're representing all of our cities. So even if Kent doesn't have a seat at an individual committee, they have a voice there through SCA. Although there are very few committees in King County or in the region that Kent doesn't have a seat on because you are all very active in the region. Next slide. As I was saying, you are one of the most engaged cities in SCA and indeed in the region. I can't actually think of any other cities that have as many people serving in regional roles as you do. So I'll just go through this. I'm not sure if you can read this. The slide has to be small because there's so many words on it because you're all so regionally engaged. But Council President Bill Voice, he is the Chair of our Public Issues Committee, the PIP. He also serves in that capacity on the SCA Board. And Bill is also a member of our SCA Equity and Inclusion Cabinet. And then we have Brenda Fincher. Brenda Fincher is really active in the region. She serves on things like the King Conservation District Advisory Committee. And she also serves on the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Oversight Committee. Then there's a levy in King County that funds those programs and Councilwoman Fincher serves on the Oversight Committee to that that determines how those dollars are spent. Councilmember Cora, Satwinder Cora, serves on three committees in the region. She serves on the Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force. She serves on the Growth Management Planning Council, which looks at how land use decisions are made around the region. And she also serves on the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency Advisory Council. Councilmember Marley Laramo serves on the Aging and Disability Services Committee as well as the Affordable Housing Committee. I know that's one of the most important committees around right now and they work really in tandem with that GMPC Committee that Satwinder Cora serves on. Xandria Michaud serves on the Regional Law Safety and Justice Committee, which I know that that's a huge concern in your community. Xandria also used to serve on the Regional Water Quality Committee, but now serves just on the Regional Law Safety and Justice. I know that's because I think it was of more importance to your city, so she switched committees. Councilmember Toni Trautner serves on the Regional Transit Committee. She's the Vice Chair of our caucus on that committee and did a ton of work last year updating all the planning documents at Metro Transit. And then your Mayor Dana Ralph serves on the PSRC or Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board as well as their Operations Committee. She's the Chair of the Puget Sound Regional Council's Transportation Policy Board. And she also serves on King County's Regional Policy Committee. And all the, so many things go through that committee, but a lot of the regional levies go through that. So taxing measures go through that. And so Mayor Ralph is there to advocate on behalf of the taxpayers of Kent on that committee. Next slide. And so the, you know, you heard that list of committees that people serve on, but that involvement, Kent's involvement in SCA means that you have a seat at the table on these really important regional issues. Things like public safety, health, behavioral health, human services, housing, land use, transportation and transit, all the different types of potential upcoming levies and ballot measures or taxing measures that might come before the county. The environment, air quality, equity, inclusion and belonging. Those are just a few of the topics that we provide staffing support on and that your council members serve on in the region. Next slide. So noting the SCA Board here, this is who serves on it currently. As I mentioned a minute ago, Council President Voice serves as our Chair of the Public Issues Committee, which I'll talk about more, but as in that capacity, he serves as, he serves on the SCA Board as well. Next slide. I was going to note that Kent has a really long history of leadership on the board. I think that your city has the longest history of always having a member on the SCA Board. So Bill serves there now. Mayor Ralph served previously until last year. She was on our board. She was our past SCA Board President. And Councilmember Higgins and Councilmember Perry previously served on the board under my leadership at SCA. So it's been great to work with all those council members and your mayor. Councilmember Voice, Council President Voice, serves as part of our SCA Leadership Team, his role as the PIP Chair also. And so that means he gets to go to meetings and represent SCA, but also represent your city in a lot of other regional things. For example, we met with Mayor Bruce Harrell last week from the Sea of Seattle and Bill was at the table with us with four other members. He also meets monthly with Executive Constantine. So it's really great that you have this person in this leadership role on your council. It gives Kent much more of a seat at the table. As one of our past presidents used to always say, if you don't, if you're not at the table, you might be on the menu. So it's really good that you're at the table in these regards. Next slide. So I want to talk a little bit about what the PIP or the Public Issues Committee is since Council President Voice does serve on that. And many of you, I think, have been to those meetings, but just in case you're not familiar with that body or is not as familiar as you might be, let's talk a little bit about the PIP. So back to that slide. So one of the important things about the PIP, and I think if we can go back one more slide, actually. Oh, sorry, this is the same slide. Okay, so next part of the slide if we could. So every city in the Sound Cities Association does have an equal voice on the PIP. And so that's kind of an unusual trait about this committee. So cities as small as like a Carnation, for example, Kirkland, which is more midsize maybe, or one of the larger cities frankly, but about 90,000. And in Kent, it's almost at 140,000 now. You all have the same voice there. And so it's a really egalitarian method of making decisions. And so every month we meet on the second Wednesday of the month and all of our 38 cities have a seat there and they all have an equal voice at the table. And we bring the important regional issues to this committee and everybody shares their thoughts. And that means that when, you know, Mayor Ralph is at the Regional Policy Committee and she's advocating, she's not just advocating on behalf of Kent, but she's heard the feedback from the other members that are at this table at PIP. And so it's a nice way to make sure that all cities have a voice on all the committees and that everybody's voice is heard. So that, one of the things that's really important about Sound Cities is that we know that Kent's one of the larger cities in the region at almost 150,000 people, but compared to the Sea of Seattle, that's over 700,000 people, Kent seems pretty small. But if you combine all the cities in Sound Cities Association together, we're well over a million people. We have about one and a half times as many people as Seattle does. And so if we all get together, we have a really powerful regional voice. And so if we come to a regional table and say, this is what the 38 cities and more than a million people we represent think, it carries a lot of weight at that table and much more than if we were going it alone as any individual city. Next slide. We recently asked our members of the Public Issues Committee to share some thoughts with us about what is the value of that committee. And these are some of the things that people shared. People said things like, you know, this committee gives me a wider view of the issues facing the region. It helps me learn how issues impact my neighbors. So not, you might know how things impact your community, but you might not know how they impact your friends in Covington or Auburn. And PIP is a place where you can all share ideas. It helps us see what our cities have in common, but it also helps us learn how we're different and distinctions between us. Someone said that it's a force multiplier and it gives my city more impact. Someone else said it gives me a place to connect with my peers and learn from them. And then someone said that our staff reports are helpful and our Policy Director Brian Perry makes us all seem smarter. So we weren't sure how to take that, whether it meant that Brian made everyone seem smarter in comparison, but we think that it meant that Brian gives us such good information that he makes us all smarter by learning from him. Next slide. So the PIP is really, it's many things. And if we can sort of go through the bullets here, it's representative of each city in SCA. Let's advance the, there we go. It's representative of each city in SCA. It's the body responsible for making recommendations on policies and committee appointments to the board. So one of the other things that PIP does is they help us decide who gets appointed to all the various regional committees. There's a nominating committee made up of one city from each part of the region that makes those recommendations. Let's advance the next bullet. And so the PIP Nominating Committee makes recommendations to the PIP and then the PIP makes recommendations to the board on who serves on all those important committees that you're all serving on. It's also, it's a vehicle for us to bring important policies to all of you in our member cities. And then it's also an important place for you to bring policies to the rest of the cities in the region and to us as staff at the Sound Cities Association. It's a place for, for cities to learn from each other. And we always, we always say it's really what your cities choose to make of it. Your city happens to be really engaged in PIP. And again, your, your council president is the Chair of that body. And so you're really, you have a really active member there. I will tell you that some cities have their alternates and even more members of their council attend the meeting every month just to go and learn. And so I would welcome any of you who are interested in learning more about the issues going on to come to those meetings. The materials get sent out about a week in advance of each meeting and we're happy to add anybody who wants to be on it to our main email list. It's also on our website, www.soundcities.org. So you can always see what the materials are and you can get familiar with what's going on just by reading those materials. Or again, please feel free to join us, especially right now as we've been meeting virtually for a bit here. It's kind of an easy way to go to those meetings. We do think we're probably going to start going back in person soon. I'm hoping that by June, we'll be back in person. But that's one of the things that the Public Issues Committee needs to decide on. We'll talk some more about that at our board meeting tomorrow. Next slide. So we see PIP as a two-way street. Its primary role is to bring all our cities together to set policies that reflect the views of all our members. But it's really also an important place for us to get information out to all of you about what's happening in the region and to make sure that you're aware of the important regional issues that are happening in all those committees that we staff and be on that as well. Next slide. As I mentioned before, it's also a place where regional committee appointments get made. It's a place for people to give guidance to the people who serve on those committees and a place for people to learn about best practices and exchange ideas. Next slide. Issues come before the PIP largely from those committees that you all serve on. Usually how issues come to the PIP is because the issues that are coming up before your committees, we think they're so important that we want to make sure we get feedback, not just from the handful of folks who serve on any individual committee, but also from all 38 of our seats. So again, we can say legitimately that we're there speaking with one voice on behalf of more than a million people in 38 cities. We also have discussions at our board sometimes that stir ideas. Sometimes we have discussions just with, you know, Bill as the Chair of PIP and our Vice Chair, we meet with them a couple of times a month to ask them, you know, what do they think should be coming up in the next month? What should be on our agenda? Topics that we discuss at the PIP or other things that get brought back. And then we have lots of other meetings at SCA. We have monthly meetings with different groups of mayors like the South End Mayors. We have a group of strong mayors that meet once a month. The deputy mayors meet once a month. Our city managers have been meeting actually once a week and city administrators. And then we have meetings, one-on-one with individual cities. So there's lots of different ways we get feedback and then we sort of funnel all those things or most, many of those things through PIP. By the way, I should mention that we're really going to miss Derek Matheson. Derek has been one of the really active members in our city managers group and it's going to be a big loss, not just to your city, but to the whole region that Derek is moving to Pierce County for his, for his work. Next slide, it says that by working together, our cities can have a really substantial voice on regional issues and that it works a lot better if we are all working together on those issues. And SCA helps give cities that voice, that unified voice. So I mentioned, I showed you a slide earlier about our mission. Our mission involves advocacy, education, mutual support and networking and acting locally and partnering regionally to create livable, vital communities. The advocacy we do through PIP, through those regional committees that you all serve on. The education, we do a lot of workshops for our members to help them learn about different things that are going on. I'm especially proud of some of the work that we've done over the past year and a half around racial equity and inclusion. Again, thank Council President Voice for serving on our Equity and Inclusion Cabinet. And we've done a number of really good trainings, I think, on that, which I know many of you have attended. And Brenda Fincher also, I should thank, really helped with a lot of the planning of some of those early workshops. She was a really great asset to all of us in, in making those planning decisions. We also do a lot of, what I say, mutual support, especially during this very stressful COVID time. We brought a lot of people together to give them the support that they needed to, to make tough decisions and especially mayors and managers who have been having to make decisions about when to close down, when to open up, you know, mask mandates, all those different things that have been going on. It's helped to bring people together to make those decisions that people aren't acting in a vacuum. And then we also, we do some networking with our members to bring them together and help them build those relationships. We have an event coming up later this month, which I hope to see many of you at. Next slide. Our vision is on your screen now, capitalizing on the diversity of our cities to lead policy change, to make the Puget Sound Region the best in the world. It's a, it's a great vision and I think that our members, including all of you, are really working hard to make that, that come to fruition. Next slide. I also wanted to share with you these guiding principles here today. We can just sort of announce through all of these. This is something that we came up with and really largely it was myself and Dana Ralph, your mayor. Dana was the president in 2020. And so in January of 2020, we held a board retreat before the pandemic hit. And we really felt like it would be important for us to set some guiding principles then. Little did we know how important these were really going to be to help guide this region. And so I'm going to share them with you today because I just think they're really powerful and I'm so proud of that work that Dana and others helped lead us through to come up with these guiding principles because we always come back to these. And during the last couple of years, it's been so important. So one of the things that we, we put out as a guiding principle is to assume that others are acting with good intent. To, as you're interacting with your colleagues and people from other agencies, sometimes it can be easy to become suspicious of, you know, what's their motive in these things? But I think if we all come to the table, assuming that other people are all trying to do their best and trying to do the right thing for the region, then it makes it a lot easier for us to work together and to, to come together on important issues. The next guiding principle that we adopted was no surprises. It makes it really hard if you're on the dais in a meeting and your colleague catches you off guard and surprises you. And so one of the things we really try to do as an organization is to get together before we go out on the dais and to have conversations about, you know, what are the concerns that we have so that when we're working together as a region, we're not catching each other unawares and not catching, no gotcha moments with staff, that type of thing. And so it's really served us well as an organization to have that as a rule. The next would be to have each other's backs to, you know, if we're looking out for our fellow cities, you know, if Auburn's looking out for Kent and Kent's looking out for Redmond and Redmond's looking out for Shoreline, we all get a lot more done if we're, if we're working in partnership with each other. We always want to think about who's not at the table. So in our case, oftentimes we're thinking about the cities who don't have a seat on the committee, what their views might be, but also who are the people who are underrepresented in our communities? And, and groups of people that might not have as much of a voice in the political process? How can we make sure that we're also thinking about those folks as we're making decisions? We'd like to, people to be candid but kind. And, you know, there's this whole Seattle nice thing that people talk about the Puget Sound Region about how we sometimes don't really say what we think because we want to be nice to each other. So we think it's important to be candid so that we can actually know what people are thinking, but also to be kind and to be gracious with each other. Once a decision's made to work together to make it work, there's lots of things that we disagree on, but then once that decision has been made, if we can all come together and partner together to make it work, we get a lot more done, we find. Showing up to meetings prepared is a big thing that we, we think that it's important to, to do that work beforehand so that we can have really engaged discussions when we are on the dais. To be fully present and engaged during meetings. You know, we, at different times had people who were, you know, even before COVID and before we were doing Zoom meetings, it's easy to be, you know, looking at your phone or checking your email, that sort of thing during meetings. And we feel that things get done a lot better if we're all really present during the meeting. Extending grace to others though and cutting them some slack. We know that it's not always easy to do these things. And so not attacking people when they, they aren't being able to engage fully, but to give them some slack. Especially right now, this has been really important because of the challenging time we've been through. To remain open-minded on things, to know that, you know, to come, to have strong opinions. You're all elected officials, you should have strong opinions. But also to be open-minded to, you know, what your colleagues think and what other cities might bring to the table has been really important for us. And then to always respect differing views. And I think if you, if you are assuming that other people are acting with good intent, that does help you also respect those differing views as well. So these are some guiding principles that we try to live by, share them with you today. Just, they may be helpful to you as well. And then finally, we've got a slide up here with our staff contact information. I'll share these slides with all of you after the fact so you can have them. Please feel free to contact me if you ever need anything, but also our policy team, our wonderful Policy Director Brian Perry, our two newer policy analysts, Kaja and Hallie are just wonderful to work with. And then Leah Willoughby, our Director of Finance and Administration, is keeping it all running behind the scenes and we really appreciate her. So with that, I'm going to open it up to questions and maybe we can take the slides down so I can see you all a little bit as we're talking. Let me know what questions you have about what's going on at SCA or maybe even for each other about the committees you're serving on on behalf of SCA because you're all doing so much and you may not have a chance to talk about it as much as you'd like.
Thank you, Deanna. Great presentation. One thing about Deanna, she's a phenomenal leader. As much work that goes through Sound Cities Association, it's such a small team as you can see, but they do a lot of work, a lot of incredible things and it's such a, a great staff and I think it had a lot to do with her leadership. So, you know, we all serve only committees, so we probably know a lot, but I think it is really good to have you come here. We have an audience here and people on TV get to hear more about Sound Cities Association. But we do have a couple of questions here, so I'm going to start off with Councilmember Trautner.
Thank you, Council President. And I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for being here and thank you for sharing all this information with our viewers and our residents because I think it's really important for people to see how well cities work together. And, you know, we talk about how well represented we are at the table, but to see you reiterate that and the importance, I think is really a great thing. And I'm looking forward to seeing you at the end of the month. And that's one of the things I really miss is getting together with other cities and just networking and talking to people and just kind of having that one-on-one of what's happening. So I'm glad that we get to be in person, looking forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Well, I'm looking forward to seeing you as well. Thank you. And I just, I will tell folks that Councilwoman Trautner, as I mentioned before, served as the Vice Chair of our caucus on the Regional Transit Committee. And there was so much work that was done last year. And I use this as an example of how to make these things work across the region, that Toni Trautner and Tony Trautner and Jennifer Robertson from Bellevue did so much work behind the scenes. They met monthly on this committee, but they also met probably 10 times a month easily to meet with county council members, to meet with people from Seattle, to meet with staff, to meet with other cities around the region, to make sure that when they went in, they were representing all of our cities and that people were understanding where our cities were coming from. And we thought it was going to be a really contentious process, that there were going to be, you know, the East Side against the South End, really pitted against each other. And because they all worked together so well, it went quite smoothly. And we had many amendments to be, that we brought forward on behalf of our cities, and they all passed unanimously. And it was really due to a lot of legwork from your staff as well, did a wonderful job helping with that process. But I just want to give some kudos to you, Councilwoman Trautner, in that. It was very helpful work.
Thank you.
Also, keep in mind that Deanna also used to be a council member, so she walked in our shoes before. So she understands what we do as well here.
I'd like to say I'm a recovering elected official.
Recovering elected official. Yeah. One thing we also do in our council meeting, we do report out, we all have a chance to report out on what's going on in our different group that we support. So that's one thing we all get to share and so on. So councilmember, last chance. Any more question for Deanna? Deanna, any closing thoughts you'd like to give us before we let you go?
Just again, to say thank you to all of you. I wish that every city was as engaged as all of you are. It's really remarkable. And I should say also, Councilwoman Thomas doesn't serve on any SCA committees right now, but I know he's also super involved in your community and in the region. He serves on your, I believe, your RFA and many other committees. You just, you have one of the best and brightest councils in the region and one of the best and brightest mayors in the region. And if I could clone you all, I would, because you're just doing a great job on behalf of your own city, but you're also helping make sure that your city's voice is heard regionally and that the region is advancing in a remarkable way. So thank you so much to all of you for all the hard work that you do, in addition to your work on the council and in addition to all the work that you do in your day jobs. I know it's a lot. And especially, thank you, Council President Voice. You've been just really active at SCA over the years, especially now as the Chair of our Public Issues Committee and our Equity and Inclusion Cabinet. It's just great to have your leadership there at the table, and we all really appreciate working with you.
Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate you. We really appreciate you taking the time out. I will encourage all of our city to have you come and really just share what SCA is all about. I just think it's just nice for us to hear. So I want to say once again, thank you. Thank you for your leadership, and be sure to tell George I say hello.
I will. He's like, he'll be glad to know I'm getting done a little early. So thank you all, and thank you, Mayor Ralph, as well. I'll see you all soon. I hope to see you all at the end of the month.
Thanks, Deanna.
Okay, good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Bye-bye. Okay. Let's move on to our next presentation. Information Technology Work Plan. I give Mike a hard time all the time I see him when he want money. So we'll see what he asking for today. Not this time? All right. So got the whole team up here, so come on up here. Okay, Mike, I'm going to turn to you, sir. All yours.
We're coming through, okay?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Council President Voice, and good afternoon to you, Madam Mayor, council members. Good to be with you this afternoon. We've brought the full squad up here. So we're going to do our best to try not to intimidate it.
Yeah, yeah.
If we can. Again, good to be with you this afternoon. Today's presentation is going to be about providing both an update as well as a celebration for technology accomplishments over basically the last two or three years. We'll see if we can hold the rain back.
We don't have the bucket like we used to, catch in the rain, so that's a good sign.
Exactly. It's been actually a really, really eventful two to three years, and so we're really excited about sharing what we, just what we've been up to with the council and with the mayor's office, as well as departments across the city. So few introductions real quick. Mike Carrington, Information Technology Director. With me today is my senior leadership team. To my immediate right is Tara Duckworth, IT Deputy Director. Brian Rambonga, who is our PMO Supervisor, Project Management Office Supervisor. Catherine Crook, who is our Manager over Enterprise GIS, Geographic Information Systems. Solman Palet, our Technology Innovation and Development Manager. And then last but not least, we've got James Endicott, who oversees the Information and Security Operations Center.
Guys, don't look so serious. Listen up, okay? They got the IT face on here, you know?
We do. We're all about business.
All right. Move on. Okay.
We've got quite a few slides here. I do want to kind of preface this by saying that we are going to land on certain slides during the presentation. The ultimate goal is to provide this deck to you after this presentation so that you can then look to carry that into the budgeting process, biennial budgeting process, as we start to churn through what initiatives are going to be vetted and then ultimately, fingers crossed, that's when Council President will be coming back and asking for money for some of that stuff.
This is just a tease, right?
It is.
All right.
So real quick, just a refresher. The divisions that make up the IT department roughly equate to about 36 full-time employees. We've got IT Administration, which is the group that I head up. The CSO, or Customer Service Operations, that Tara oversees. Infrastructure and Security, which James spearheads. Technology and Innovation, that Solman's overseeing. Enterprise GIS with Catherine, and then Brian with the Project Management Office. Next slide, thanks. These next eight to 10 slides are, might look familiar to you. They're actually part of what I presented at the 2019 council retreat. And I was real excited when I went through these because it was really an indicator, quite honestly, of what we've been able to accomplish over the last two or three years. So we like to think that there's a method to our madness, and this, we hope, is testimony to that fact. Why technology matters in a municipality, tools and services that enable resident businesses and government to work more efficiently and interact with each other in new and improved ways. Technology, as I was stating at that retreat, is fuel for a smart city also, and that's a common theme through technology implementation here at the city. Next slide. The vision statement that I shared with you is for us to become a city enabled by technology through what we were referring to, or what we often refer to as innovation pathways. Okay? Those pathways are also associated with growth strategies. And I'll go through these real quickly, just trying to set the table for the rest of the presentation. Those pathways encourage inclusion, opportunity and innovation. Our technology plan highlights the growth strategies within two broad pathways. Pathway number one was about infrastructure, and pathway number two is about data and the eventual maturation of our processes to help leverage data, information and knowledge to make more and better informed decisions. Those pathways and growth strategies, as I said, pathway number one about infrastructure also had initially an inner focus, got to get our own house in order, before we could then extend to an outer focus where we can outreach to citizens, other municipalities, other organizations, partners that we look to leverage in an effort to try and come to common consensus on goals that we could mutually benefit from especially. This is arguably, this slide and the next slide are probably my two favorite slides in the entire slide deck. Through these growth strategies, we established initiatives. Under pathway number one, for infrastructure, we talked about the distinct important need of replacing adequate core business systems, and then establishing new base technology platforms. And then I went out on a limb to create a list, or provide a list, of quite a few initiatives that we knew most of them would be multi-year, multimillion-dollar efforts on the city's part. Again, to be quite honest with you, when I first put that list together, I was thinking to myself, okay, my take is two, three potentially bienniums to get through that entire list. There's some huge efforts that are listed here that oftentimes take three or four years to get through. We'll be touching on these, so I won't beleaguer the point of what's listed here, but the next slide, I think, really underscores especially what we're so excited about. Green checkmarks are next two initiatives that we have completed. The under construction signs next to the other two are underway. The last one wasn't even on the original list, and that's a huge effort to deal with the Police Department's Record Management System in and of itself. So I'm going to pause for just one brief second to let you absorb this list. It was super, super exciting for me to put this list together, this deck together, excuse me, with my team and to have that literally jump out at the page, jump out of the page at us.
I will make a quick comment while we staring at it, sir. I know in 2012, when I came on along with, at the time, Councilmember Dana Ralph, I mean, our technologists, it was held together by, we made a joke all the time, bubble gum and duct tape, right? And then customer cord came about as well, too, right? So just huge improvement, and I think it come from, you know, the leadership with Mayor Ralph. I think, you know, we realized technology is important, as well as, as councilmember who both, who have IT background, understand IT. And I'm just really, really pleased with where we at from a technology standpoint. You got a great team and just so happy to see us make great progress. Still have a ways to go, but I think we're definitely, definitely heading in the right direction. So that's kudos to you and your leadership, as well as the councilmember, I think, and mayor for really supporting and seeing this IT is really important backbone of the city next to HR. Okay?
You don't have an HR badge. I appreciate the kind words, Council President, and I could not agree with you more. It's really fundamentally about supported every critical level of the organization that, again, to your point, starts with you and ripples down through the rest of the Real quick, on pathway number two, it's fundamentally about data. There's been a lot of discussion, I would hope that this resonates with most, if not all of you, around the topic of data analytics, and especially from a technology perspective, what it takes to support the ability to leverage data successfully. So you can see knowledge-based, measurable decision-making, and again, that inner focus so that we can then set the table for the outer focus. Pathway number two includes business intelligence platform, platforms, as well as implementing an enterprise data warehouse. We're going to talk a little bit more about that. Solman will touch on that especially. Policy standards, procedures and guidelines associated with that. And then promoting sound data stewardship and information utilization as the organization matures through the data maturity model in an effort to put all of that data that we're going to be collecting to good use. The BIT, or the Business Intelligence Team, is really at the heart of that data component. It's something that IT is initially kicked off, is spearheading yet again, but it's really important to note that it's not just an IT consideration. It's critically important for all of the departments to contribute to this effort for the organization as a whole to be able to leverage data successfully. So the Business Intelligence Team is something that you're going to be hearing a lot about. We had this thing called a pandemic that got wedged in between our initial establishment, actually in 2018, and then I had mentioned it to you all in 2019. We got through that period and we've just kicked off the Business Intelligence Team again, and we've got the entire organization involved in that. So we're super, super excited about that work. Next steps, as I had said back then, are going to be important now, is to evolve the city's emerging technology plan, which has, as a part of it, the projects and programs that we need to continue to execute against. And then true-to-form, Council President, support and funding for those efforts. Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and pass the mic over to Tara. When we think about IT here at the city, we fundamentally think about two primary categories. There's operations, and then there are projects. I want to underscore the fact that we are first and foremost about maintenance and operations of existing systems. We got to keep those systems running efficiently and effectively, and only then do we look to allocate resources to projects. So all this project work gets done after we do our top priority of maintaining and operating existing systems. It's really a testimony to the leadership team that I have and the line staff that are a part of their critical teams. And so with that, I'll turn the mic over to Tara so that she can talk a bit about that.
Hello, everyone. I'm Tara Duckworth. Thank you for having me here. The way we provide that ongoing support, and you're going to hear a lot about projects in a few moments, but the way we provide the ongoing support is on a three-tiered system. The first tier is our service desk support, and they get all the calls that come in and people stopping by and all of that first level, what do you need? It's not working. I've got an issue. I need a password reset. Something's happening. It comes in through our front door. That's our service desk tier one. When things get a little more complicated than that, we have our tier two, our Systems Operations Engineering Group. A lot of the more complicated work could be perhaps working with police vehicles and a lot of their equipment and some of their complex applications and the peripheral devices, the point-of-sale devices, printers. A lot of that hits tier two. Tier three is our Business Systems Analyst, and they work on supporting our major applications that are out there. So system updates that might be needed, upgrades of one kind or another, or tweaking, configuration changes, new interfaces that might need to be built and coordinated with our application development team. So that hits our tier three support. So, and that group of people handles thousands of requests per year. So next slide. Yeah, thousands. And the way we categorize those thousands of requests is we have both incidents and service requests. Incidents are something's broken, someone can't do their job, or a whole department of people can't do their job, there's a whole system down. Can be anywhere from one person who can't get into their laptop for whatever reason to an entire application for whatever reason is down, and that we categorize as an incident. A service request is I need to change something. Something needs to be different and improved. I can go about doing my current job today, but I want to change. That's also, I have a new employee. They need new equipment. I need a new phone. I need a better laptop faster, better equipment of one kind or another. I need a change to an application that I've, that we have up and running. Those all come through as service requests. And so you can see 1,400 in 2021, 1,400 incidences around there, and 4,800 service requests coming in. So we do a heavy volume of activity there. And we do service every department out there. So you'll see some of our big players, our public works and parks. A lot of that is due to not only the size of those departments, but they have a lot of seasonal employees. So there's a lot of onboarding and offboarding of people coming in and out that need equipment, and of course, the corresponding questions that come with newer employees coming in and out. Police is also a heavy hitter for us, a very complex environment, as well as dealing with all of their equipment in their cars. That constantly needs to be supported and maintained on the police side. Administration is big. A lot of public requests for information come through, and a lot of records management comes through our administration side. So those keep those numbers pretty high for us. So we work really hard at trying to service this whole group and keep the applications up and running for everybody, and also help support, in a way, the newer projects that are coming down the road. We provide some advice as those projects are being built, since we have, and help represent the departments with their current applications. So that information can be very helpful to new applications as they're being built as well. And now I'll turn it over to...
Brian?
Thank you, Tara. Would you be able to manage the clicker while I'm... So this next slide, you know, as I'm going and talking about projects, I want to encourage my colleagues to jump in wherever they see fit as we really talk about new technology implementations across the city that we've recently completed. that we've recently completed over the last biennium. This slide really just represents some of the leading, industry-leading solutions that we've been able to replace some of our legacy businesses, some applications with over the last biennium. We have some big names out there, one including Workday, Laserfish, as well as City Works, and we'll be diving into those solutions as completed projects later on in the remaining slides. So this visual is really just a count of what we like to refer as our IT work plan. And our IT work plan really does include initiatives that are active, initiatives that have been completed over the last three years since 2019, as well as future requests. You can see in the departments outside of IT that, you know, they're a little bit smaller in the slice of the pie because those initiatives really just encompass our capital-approved projects. We really just generally refer to those as larger efforts. IT represents pretty much half of this pie because we also are including within our work plan initiatives on smaller to medium, including larger scale. So really just to kind of kick off sort of the formats of the way that I will be presenting projects in the space for all the departments, you'll see this format, which is really just a Gantt. The projects in gray are our projects that have been completed. The projects lined in green are our active projects, and those in yellow are project requests, future initiatives that we'll be looking to tackle and partner with departments such as administration. And really to just touch base on this very lightly because we do have 10 departments, and as you saw from the previous slide, we have about 272 initiatives. Definitely want to give my colleagues some time to speak as well. We'll really just be touching at a high level on some of the more critical completed projects and our future efforts, really celebrating the completed projects that we've completed over the last biennium. So really quickly to mention, within the Administration Department, you guys might remember there was some social media and some press as of recent, but we did deploy last month a refresh for our external website, our CMS refresh. This next slide really is just in a little bit more detail what we've identified or outlined in the previous slide. So it's just really for you to kind of thumb through and get a little bit more detail on the projects in the Gantt format to really understand and identify the start date, end date, completed date for our completed projects, our active projects, the budget that we have approved, as well as, you know, again, just kind of talking to Mike's point earlier, when we're going to be potentially coming to council asking for additional funding for new capital projects next biennium, just a bit of a teaser into future requests or initiatives for that department. Again, another slide on future requests for Administration. Now, kind of before we dive into our Economic Committee Development Department, I'll hand the mic briefly over to Soaman, where he'll talk about one of the projects that we recently deployed, which was Amanda for our Kiva replacement and really identifying this chart as kind of the critical intersecting points of integration and the involved systems.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Soaman Pallett. This is a diagram that's more of a critical path diagram to address multiple systems. When we started in 2019 down this road, there were a lot of interconnected systems. We realized the integration. So it gets a little tricky, it's a little dance, you're trying to replace one system while also keeping an old one alive, but then that needs integrations, and it just gets to be very messy. But all of the ones that have the green checkmarks, we completed. So you'll see some of these projects in other areas that are not ECD projects per se. But the point-of-sale, for example, attached a lot of these pieces. The ones in blue, we custom-built. So, but for ECD, we'll focus in that center lane where the Kiva replacement is at. We have the blue beam up and running, and then Kiva was replaced with Amanda. There is a citizens portal we thought we would have to build ourselves, but they came out with the latest version of Amanda. I think Bellevue has had to build theirs because they have the older version of Amanda. And then we had to integrate our GIS to that. Kiva never had any kind of spatial data, so a lot of stuff going on. Laserfish is a part of it as well. So to basically read this diagram, you start on the right side and go backwards and go, I want to get here, what does it take to get there? Oh, I need this. So the one that has the most arrows pointing in or out of it wins as the most complex.
Okay. And one project to really celebrate as we look at ECD is, of course, Amanda, our Kiva replacement. You know, Kiva was out there for a little over 20 years, I think. Recently deployed that last year. And we are now soon rolling into, or currently rolling into, Amanda stabilization where new functionality for that solution is being rolled out in an agile methodology. So every, about every four weeks. Next highlight is finance projects. Of course, you know, a quick celebration and mention to our Workday deployment, HCMA, which really encompassed payroll for HR as well as our finance departments. Another highlight in 2023 where we'll look to tackle a future request or big project being our JDE replacement, which will hopefully encompass the remaining aspect of JDE, which really is the financials piece to it.
Councilmember Court, do you have a question now you want to ask? Okay. And Councilmember Lommer, you want to ask yours now? Okay. Go ahead.
Again, a quick mention and shout out to HCMA and Workday deployment for human resources, really just identifying that it was a very, very big project that a lot of stakeholders were involved, multiple departments, multiple years over the course of the last biennium to get deployed. For our Municipal Court Department, one quick highlight for future projects that, you know, we really wanted to get council aware of is our GIS replacement. This will be a big project, a big solution replacement for Municipal Court. We recently, I would say about a year and a half, two years ago, just deployed Laserfish with Oak Court and Integrations to GIS for the Municipal Court. We have before and after pictures where they have file vaults of just hard copied documents in a room that they have at the Municipal Court, essentially now gone and in Laserfish as digital records. The state has now mandated that GIS, their existing case management system, be replaced in conjunction with all other municipal courts in the region. So this will be a big effort, just wanted to get you guys aware of. Our legal projects, the list doesn't look too big. We don't get too many requests or active projects with our friends over in the Legal Department, but we do have a law base replacement identified. We recently deployed law base, well, not recently, I would say in about 2018, we deployed law base for prosecution, and in 2019, law base for civil. Hopefully in 2023, we can look at a new solution in replacing law base. And there has been some recent discussion on performing a bit of discovery with solutions that are out there to replace law base. Go back one. For our Parks Department, we did also recently deploy a class replacement. Class was our recreation management system, as well as our enterprise point-of-sale system at one point, also another legacy business system application, over 20 years old. We recently moved to a VSI solution called RecTrack. Another completed project to celebrate. One highlight is that we are currently inactive and working on a project to deploy an asset management solution with our Parks Department. And we really wanted to, at least I wanted to highlight the asset management piece as there are a lot of tie-ins with spatial management and asset lifecycle with things that are going on in our GIS space as it involves Amanda, City Works, and now potentially solutions over in our Parks Department like RecTrack. Catherine will be diving into the spatial part to these solutions a bit later. Of course, we're up the big one that we're working on with our Police Department is RMS. We've recently decided that we will be moving to the same body camera vendor, Axon. I believe the team has also identified additional scope for our, our jail management system and potentially moving forward with another vendor for easier implementation and that that jail management system solution will integrate with Axon. And then for Public Works, quick celebration on our City Works deployment, again, replacing another over 20-year-old legacy business application, Hanson. The team had recently deployed that late Q3 of 2021. Hanson over to City Works. Quick highlights that we wanted to identify, at least for future projects in 2023. We are referring to it as a program. If you look back on the finance project slides, there are two other projects that are related to our water meter head replacement. We're bundling the Radix replacement, the Data Now replacement, as well as our water meter head replacement into this AMI slash AMR program or a water utility program. And then last but not least, we have about the 120 different initiatives for IT. This is where I will just hand it off to my colleagues to kind of dive deeper into areas and projects, ProDops in their space. If we go further down, James will probably talk a little bit about a current project that we have going on in the city where we are deploying multi-factor authentication to the enterprise. So with that, I'll hand it off to Catherine.
Hey, I might, although you guys probably are going to get to it, but I'm just curious, I mean, there's a lot of system. I'm just concerned about the platform, and maybe you could talk a little about the integration, and maybe you'll talk about it later on, but I just kind of, interested to see how this links up.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Crook, and I'm the GIS manager. We're really fortunate that we have a lot of GIS work being done here at the city, which makes us all very happy. Data seems to be driving a lot of the different implementations that Brian just spoke about. We have a lot of new outward-facing GIS applications that have been built over the last couple of years. We just moved into the IT department as GIS grew out of the Public Works Department. And so we went into IT in June of 2020. And so over the last almost two years of being there, we have deployed quite a few applications. And each one of these applications are built upon a data inventory. So we need data to be able to project it and show it on an outward-facing environment. So Build Kent, it gets about 1,000 views monthly. And Build Kent is an ECD space where they are showing projects, current and future projects that the city is working on in the ECD planning environment. This has been very well-received out there, and we're really happy that ECD supports this and edits it all by themselves. We do not do it. We build it and we hand it over, so they're doing such a great job with that. The next large one that was just deployed was the Kent, Advanced Kent Performance Measures that was just deployed five days ago, I think. And another really great platform as it is showing the council's values and different things that we are doing as a city to show ourselves in the region. And those performance measures are per department, and that is being supported by our lean coordinator, Michael Mage, and Kathleen McConnell in Finance. Both of those are supporting this, editing it, and built it on a new, completely GIS environment called Hub that we have access through our enterprise agreement. Another one that we add is Kent Public Art Inventory. We have over 200, 300 pieces of art in and around the city. And so we worked together with the Parks Department to make sure that there was an interactive outward-facing map of these different pieces of art throughout the city. And that is completely supported and edited by the Parks Department. So we're there to train and hand it over, and they're doing a great job supporting it. The interactive map is where are different parks' assets throughout the city, and that is getting looked at over 200 times a month. And that is if you want a covered picnic table, if you want a ball field or something with lights on it, you know, so that they can see it in the evening, so they can go in there and select and look at it that way. Another one that we're working on right now, it's been deployed, we're doing a little more marketing on it, is the Police Safe Cam application. And that is an outward-facing application where residents and business owners volunteer their camera locations so that in case something happens in that area, officers and the Police Department have access to data feeds through the cameras. So that one, currently we have 30 signed up, and we are looking to get more. So they're working on the marketing in the multimedia department right now. So we also have a lot of inward-facing GIS applications. One of our biggest uses are the Kent Data Viewer. So that means somebody sitting at their desk can go on to our, you know, interface and look at every single dataset that the city has, down to where is the light pole or where is the, any type of stormwater or gas, you know, valve on top of a water meter. So there's all these different things that we have, that we put in one spot. One of the biggest draws to that is the FEMA, and it's just been updated. And so we also have addresses attached to that as well. We have the Kent Mailer application. When I first got here in 2017, this did my head in. Everybody wanted us to make mailing labels. And when you get mailing labels, you have to do like thousands of mailing labels to make sure that the residents are getting the information to their doorstep. So we developed an application that allowed them to, all they have to do is go in, make a circle or a line or a polygon or whatever they want on the screen, and then that collects it, exports it as an Excel, and that allows them to feed it into the system and make their own mailing labels. So that has been a really good one that gets used constantly. Another one is the Connect Explore, which is an outside vendor that we, subscription-based, that we also have historical imagery on that. So we can go back, all the way back to 2003, I think it is, and we can see change over time. So that allows, any, ECD is our biggest user. So if they're looking at something on the imagery, they can see, oh, what did it look like two years ago, four years ago? Was that there, you know, last year? And it's updated with aerial imagery every year, sometimes every six months. But this last few years, it's been yearly. And it also does oblique imagery, so we have police using it when they're in code enforcement. And so they're allowed to see a 45-degree angle around any building and structure so they can see what is happening in and around that vicinity. So they don't have to leave their cars very often unless something looks really odd, then they will say, oh, I saw this, I should get out and go take a longer look at it. So another thing that we've been really proud of is, there's three of us, well, there's been two of us. But we also have a really good, robust group in Public Works GIS. And Parks is now hiring a GIS coordinator, so we're happy there, too. And so we all work together to try and bring all these datasets and put it in a components so that we can get this information out in transparency with the public. So we are looking at a, moving forward with more and more GIS users throughout the city, which really helps with the transparency and getting data viewed. Another thing is we have a really robust intern program, and we work closely with the University of Washington in Tacoma, and I've just brought on Seattle. And we have had at the city of Kent 13 GIS interns. And we have had at the city of Kent, 13 GIS interns in various departments throughout the city, and they've done a lot of good work. And those interns, I did an audit on them, which, you know, you have to, keep track where they are. And all of them are employed as GIS analysts throughout the region. So we're really proud of that and all of us help with that. So it's really a good program for us to be a part of. So that's what I have. I think that's my last slide.
I'm surprised, former member, Councilmember Dennis Higgins is probably chomping at the bit here and all this, yes. I'm surprised my phone not blowing off yet, so, but it's good to hear.
Hi again. So the Business Intelligence Team, just to kind of come back, we had a reboot and we're going out to get members added from the different departments. So I just want to, this is really good to tie in with enterprise GIS as well, because when we did it, when we started it back in 20, late 2018, early 19, Catherine and I were not in the same department. So we were working together as best as we could and the data warehousing was the biggest challenge, because I was fighting it from an IT standpoint with, okay, do I get BI server? Do I, what do I do here? But the more we realized, and when we finally got GIS in IT, we were able to say, why not just make ArcGIS our data warehouse? So that's where we landed. So ArcGIS is now not just for GIS purposes, it's also the city's data warehouse. As Catherine mentioned, the Performance Measures, Data Mart, is actually in the ESRI space. And we also have our citywide addressing database. So we were able to do spatial land management better, because again, with Kiva not having that in a spatial format, we didn't know, hey, we should probably have an addressing database we manage. And we did that and now we're able to hook that up with Amanda and we'll be hooking it up with our other systems as we get them online, like the Police System Replacement, Axon will actually hit, hook into our Data Mart for addressing. And we'll see more and more of these Data Marts coming out as we go as a place to store data. And it ties in with records, because every time you create data, you just created records. So that's why those are together. We're also going to really focus on the steering and governance this year. That's really my focus, number one focus, is to get the standards, data standards in place. We kind of jumped ahead and did the data warehousing because ESRI does have standards, so we're not totally running wild, but we do need to talk more about those standards. And then with analytics, you know, these just build on each other. Our hardest issue is probably going to be the getting those dedicated data personnel, data stewards into place. But as we are getting more GIS across the city, analysts, I think we're going to meet that. There's also product owners who have to understand the business processes, not just the data, but the processes. Sometimes they're the one and the same, sometimes there's not. If they are together, we like to call them the unicorn, the VICOM, the Business Intelligence Knowledge Managers. Very few out there, but they are prized possessions, because then it's not two FTEs, you just need one. And then when you put all this together and you get all the residents involved, you get into smart city. I always say it takes, smart cities require smart departments, so we're working towards that.
All right. Well, good evening again. James Endicott, Information Technology Infrastructure and Secure Operations Manager. So I get to kind of talk a little bit about the newest part of IT, right? Historically, security's always been kind of on each individual engineer's position, right? That they have to do the basic security. And over time, as I became manager, that was kind of what my focus was, is how do we evolve security-wise as an organization and take that responsibility off of the engineers doing their daily work and literally put a focus of security around there? And it's been a really big challenge from the standpoint of, it's not something that we had a huge focus on. And so having to weave that into our daily lives without becoming super disruptive to city staff, to our, you know, our systems and to our, really even to IT users, that's kind of been the challenge. So it's a very slow process that can really be measured over years and not necessarily months or weeks, kind of a thing. So with that being said, right, our whole goal is to protect information in the systems that the city has, assets and users. We do that through an approach that we call kind of defense in depth, right? Think of it as very similar to your house, right? At your house, your front yard, you have a fence that protects your yard. If somebody gets through there, you have a floodlight that comes on. If they turn the floodlight on, they go to the front door, there's a bolt on the door, they open the door, there's a, you know, security system, that type of thing. And we really do implement very, very similar tactics here at the city, that there isn't a single solution to what we do. It really is multiple layers that we have to implement. It becomes very challenging, because some of those are, you know, perimeter, some of them are users, some of them are system-based. So there is multiple layers to that. So we're really excited about having spun up the Security Operations Center. And really, that's the one, one of my biggest highlights that I want to offer right now is this last year, we did spin up what we call our Security Operations Center. We did actually even add a secondary security engineer this year, so thank you very much. That was a term limited position. We're really excited. Three years gives us a lot more resources from a security standpoint, so we can support all of the projects that are going on within the rest of IT and the rest of the city. So really excited about that. Some of the things I want to highlight about what the Security Operations Center has done, one of the biggest ones is a vulnerability management program. So we never really had that before. And what that is, is it's a way for us to identify as a city, what systems we have and what are the vulnerabilities that they present, right? If a system isn't patched in a certain way. Everybody knows Adobe Reader or Adobe Flash, those are really, really bad applications historically from a security standpoint. So how do we know that somebody doesn't have an old system installed or application on their computer? So now we have a tool that actually is proactive, that can go out and say, hey, this laptop has an old patch, you need to update that, it's a vulnerability. We can actually weight those and get metrics, like how on the scale of risk, where is this? Is it really low risk? This is a very high risk? So we have a much better grasp now of what our risks are from vulnerabilities. One of the other things I'm really, really excited about that we're doing, before, we were very reactive to our security, right? We would get alerts, we'd go in, we'd research them. So now we have something that are called threat intelligence feeds. So we are connected to a multi-state information sharing center from the FBI, from industry leaders, and we are getting what we call indicators of compromise. Things that we know that happened in other breaches or attacks, we can take that information and we can actually plug it into our system and say, do we see those same type of things happening in our network? So now it gives us a place to start being proactive. We can also patch them, you know, address those types of vulnerabilities. So that's a really, really big one. I think, hopefully, most of you know, active project that we did kick off today was multi-factor authentication. It's a very big project. I was kind of commenting to a mic earlier that as simple as MFA has sounded, it has been actually one of the most complex projects I have done since I've been at the city. And because there's so many iterations of users and phones and devices, and it's just been very, very crazy. So it was definitely a great learning opportunity for me. So we're excited about that. This was really driven by the cybersecurity liability standpoint, our insurance company, because they did mandate that we needed to have this in place before they would provide a certain level of coverage. So we're really excited. Our goal was to get this rolled out by the end of March and we're right on track. We're going to have this basically implemented in March. And the reality is, this is a project typically, which we would have measured in years, at least a year, but we literally are measuring this in about three to four months. So it's been a very, very fast-developing project. So super proud of all the work that, you know, the team has done and then really the city as a whole to support it. Last two things I want to talk about is a future project, because I know with this landscape of everything going on in cybersecurity, right, where do we stand as a city? We need to know, what are the things that we're vulnerable to, right? And not the tools that are telling us that, but literally a third-party outsourced vendor that can look and poke around. And so we do have on our roadmap, a penetration test, right? Well, they will literally come in and as simple as doing social engineering, they'll walk up to counters, they will go through garbage cans. I mean, they will literally try to penetrate our network and not just from a technical standpoint, but from a social engineering standpoint. So we expect that to be, you know, eye-opening, but in a good way, right? It will help us prepare better as a city. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, we actually are at Q and A. The previous slides are really just a capper, the last two. That's where the balloons and streamers were supposed to fall from the ceiling to celebrate what we've accomplished. I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to acknowledge especially this leadership team that you see me sitting here with. I would literally put this group up against any organization or team or group that I've worked with, especially from a leadership and execution perspective. It's jaw-dropping to me what we have literally been able to accomplish, especially over the last three years or so. And I'm immensely proud and consider it an honor to be able to work with these very, very high-performing IT professionals. So I just wanted, again, to take a brief moment to formally acknowledge them, to thank them in front of you for the great work that they've done, especially in leadership with what we've been able to build as great teams for staff that are members of each of these divisions. So it's been really fun. It was scary, oh, by the way, we squeezed a pandemic in the middle in there as a backdrop. And if you'd have told me that beforehand, I would have thought the doors came off of the car, right? Especially in that 2019 presentation I did with you on the items that we were going to try and tackle. So it's been, it's been a lot of hard work, but it's been immensely satisfying and rewarding work and it's been just that much better because of the great team that I get to work with day in and day out. So again, I want to encourage you, we're going to send the slide deck out. I want to encourage you to carry those into especially the IT discussions, technology discussions as a part of the biennial budget process as we start figuring out what we're going to do to tackle our list. I can't quite promise that we'll be able to pick the same kind of list and be able to have the same performance. I'd be remiss, I'd probably be getting elbows on the way out if I didn't at least acknowledge that. But at this point in time, based on what we've been able to accomplish, I think the sky's the limit for being able to go forward. So again, really appreciate your support, the mayor, the mayor's office support. It's really what provides a stepping stone for us to be able to be successful. So we wanted to come here and celebrate with you, as you should take just as much pride from my perspective in what we've been able to accomplish as we are taking. So it's been a great, great, successful two, three-year stretch.
Totally agree. Mike, I appreciate you and your leadership, phenomenal team, and for maybe all of you guys and the work that you have done. So I really appreciate that. So I expect my two IT techy councilmember will have their buzzer on, so the real test is going to come now, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna let them tackle you one by one. So we're going to start with Councilmember Core, please.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mike. Great presentation. Thank you, team. So much work done during the pandemic, and I have to say, I give kudos to pandemic, really, because we were so far behind and then we had, we were forced to be virtual, forced to get our employees online and just had to make it happen. And so congratulations on making that happen. And now we're in the world of hybrid and it's amazing to see on this side of the pandemic, because before this, I don't think people realized how important technology was in their lives, so. So it'll definitely be on top of the budget, you know, and we're having conversations along with other things, because, man, we have made so much progress. I just kind of was curious about the number of tickets in 2021 that you shared, Tara? Like if they were the same before pandemic or they were more during the pandemic in 2021, 2022? It's kind of just out of curiosity, because a lot more employees were on, you know, virtually, working remotely, so.
I believe there was an uptick, just with the number of devices that were rolled out to everybody. Everybody got a lot of new devices, a lot of new laptops, a lot of how-to-use teams, questions, how to use the technology that we were rolling out. So, yeah, there was a definite uptick as knowledge was gained by all of our employees on how to use that.
That's what I imagined. Thank you. Yeah, great job.
All righty. Councilmember Lomar, she let you off easy, too. Councilmember Lomar.
Yeah, so I just, you know, I think my sentiments are going to be, or echo, Councilmember Core is just like, bravo. You showed that slide and I'm just stunned. I kind of want to know, like, what is your secret sauce? Because I would love to package it and take it to my technology teams. How did you accomplish that much? And then add a pandemic to it, just is astounding. Mike, I remember sitting in your office when I first joined and it was so, it was prior to the 2019 and you had that giant, we went over that giant roadmap and like all the colored boxes. I just remember thinking, that is an overwhelming amount of work. And you said you were going to do it and I was like, well, okay, hats off. You go get them. So I'm just really pleased and, you know, you've got a great team and obviously what you guys have been able to accomplish just is astounding. So congratulations, all of you. And thank you for everything you did and for hanging in to do that much work and then deal with a pandemic on top of it. So we really appreciate you.
Awesome. Thank you, councilmembers. Just real quickly on that point, as I always fall back on things ultimately boil down to the lowest common denominator, it's the people. So this leadership team, the staff that we have in each of the divisions, again, I'd put this team up against any team I've ever worked with in public, private, nonprofit, small, medium, and large organizations. Then Dirk knows that I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this, because he and I have talked about it a lot over the years along with the mayor. For us, fundamentally, it boils down to attitude and discipline. Positive can-do attitude. And then traditionally, we like to think there's a method to our madness. So we've got a decent amount of process form and function that we approach our work with, because traditionally, we lean towards the notion that the, on average, the more disciplined you are, the higher the likelihood for success. So we take the time to go through technology steering. We do that every other week as a management team. We have a project steering team that meets every other week to go through the work plan, to reshuffle based off of what is pretty consistent over the years, where one out of every four of our projects was not budgeted nor was it planned. Some legal requirements, some pressure that comes through organizations to the departments and then ultimately requires some evaluation and deployment of new technology reaches us. So we try to have a method to our madness and adhere to being as disciplined as we can, knowing that tech is crazy, it's constantly changing and, you know, changing incredibly quickly. But if we put up guardrails for ourselves and we're still at least heading in the general direction and path that we had established via those roadmaps, then what we've found is we've been able to be successful. So again, thank you for the kudos.
Okay. Well, that said, I have no more question. Once again, great job, guys. Keep up the good work. You already set the bar here, so you only go higher, so keep up the good work and we appreciate all of you and Mike. Once again, your leadership is just awesome. So thank you very much. And we're going to break until seven o'clock. So, thank you.